We'll call the meeting to order and I'd ask you all to stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, so I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda as amended, correct? Amended?
As presented, yep.
Thank you, Derek.
Second?
Second by Brandon. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Number three is district recognitions. At this point, I'm gonna turn the first one over to Superintendent Lindholm and it will go on from there.
Yeah, thank you. Our first recognition, the individual unfortunately isn't here tonight. The person we're recognizing is our community ed director, Julie Despot. She was nominated for the Minnesota Community Education Association Regional Community Expert or Person of Excellence. And that's really a vote of support by her colleagues, the other community ed directors in the state of Minnesota. So we wanna definitely say congratulations to Julie and for the incredible work she does for our district. For our next series of recognitions, I'm actually gonna turn it over to Principal Rankin. He'll introduce coaches and students on his list.
Uh, Mr. Chair, members of the board, we had an amazing fall. I would tell you that I think it was prior most successful fall I've seen in the last, I've been to six here. This has been our best fall in maybe the last 10 years. All of our sports were really clicking, all of our activities. And even now, a number of kids in the, we didn't feel skating, rave reviews. So it's been an amazing fall. And with that, we have a number of individuals recognized. First, I'm gonna bring up Coach Sargent and our head coach. And we have two young ladies, Sydney and Haley, both seniors, qualified for the state tournament. So come on up. Coach, you wanna say just a few words about these two unbelievably young ladies?
I didn't hear my notes.
That's okay. I know they played singles for the lot during the year and then they came together to form a doubles team at the end. And took second in the section and then went off to the state, got some more state tournament experience. What was it?
Yeah, it was really cool. The characters were very interesting.
Where'd you play?
Um, we played at Reed Smart Center in, uh, Minneapolis.
Was it in the tent or is it tied to the championship?
Uh, no, it was just in the tent, in the center.
Cool.
It was really fun.
They played St. James the first round and they won, six one, six three. And then they played at, um, Rec the second round. Rec had two teams in the doubles tournament. Both sister teams, one sister on each team. Random brackets supposedly. They were at the top and the bottom of the bracket. And the two sister teams not in the finals.
Last game wins?
But the girls played great. They did a really good job. Haley finishes second on the all-time win board and, um... And I don't think he must be fourth on the all-time win board. They'll both be on the hundred win board that Mr. Helmers is in the process of updating. And it will hang in our new gym facility, over the double doors straight ahead as you walk in. So it'll probably be done, maybe not without opening basketball thing by early in the season. So...
The other thing too, we have two excellent students also, great academic students. They volunteer, they do whatever they imagine. We're gonna see them throughout the rest of the year.
Congratulations, ladies.
Yes, good job, ladies.
Next I must speak down to Riley Young. Riley, come on up. Riley is...
Riley, here's Riley.
She is now selected as Miss Central Minnesota's outstanding team representative. She's also a sophora, she's all excellent. Well, come on down Saturday. She's participation in the Miss Minnesota Outstanding Team pageant and provides her a great opportunity and opportunity for Miss Minnesota's outstanding student achievement. So tell us about your experience.
Well, the Miss America system is currently the nation's leading provider of scholarships for young women. I don't even know the number anymore of millions of dollars that they give in girls, which whenever I tell people... I'm gonna kinda make a circle here. Whenever I tell people that, you know, I'm involved in a pageant, they think, well, she's standing pretty dressed on stage and, uh...
Waves.
The brightest upstairs. But it's a scholarship program and I'm sorry, but that's just area of like... And, um, it's a service-based program. So over the past year, I've had over 300 hours of community service. And that's just over the past year. So, um, and another criteria for the program is you have to develop a platform. And that's another service-based part. And it's something you work with throughout your entire year. So my platform is how much is too much? And it's all about prioritizing your extracurricular activities so you'll have a healthy physical and mental future. And so I'll be working with that throughout my year as Miss Central Minnesota's outstanding team and hopefully maybe as a state representative.
Wow. Congratulations. Your mother would be very proud.
CJ Riley is now with us. He said he's in, he's got a basketball practice. CJ was selected, he's our first player because District Football is new this year. But he was the Midwest Player District Player of the Year. And CJ was actually selected as offensive quarterback, most valuable quarterback. And because of the way the, the new district worked, you can only have one. Otherwise you've been most outstanding. D-back also. But he is the most outstanding Midwest Player District Player of the Year. So it's a great honor for him and for our football program.
Is that state high school league?
It is. District Football is part of state high school league. So now you have all these districts across the state and then they, they have a section working on it.
As opposed to, as opposed to conference?
Yes. So yeah.
Exactly.
There is, you know, all conference football's over and that's how the districts work. So we also had a number of academic recognitions too for our players in the district. So next, I wanna bring up two of our coaches, Anna Larson and Jeff Braver. They were both selected the Section 8A, cross-country coach of the year for Section 8A. And with them, there's a team that qualified for the state tournament and a number of our fine men over there.
Come on up. Come on up. Do a couple laps.
Now, by the way, this is the first time a team's qualified for the state tournament since...
2008?
2008. So take it away, Coach.
This is Coach Larson, assistant coach, and these are some of the boys that ran.
Can we, we have your names, introduce yourself? Yeah.
Tony Fitzer, Jacob Chea, Marty Fitzer, Levi Palmer, and Carl Ryan Doyle.
Awesome.
We've been practicing. They, uh, it's been different. They've definitely jumped in with two feet this year. We put on a lot of goals and it's been Saturday practices, it's been Tuesday practices, it's been meals two nights before, gathering, breakfast on Saturdays. And they have really poured their heart into this and it has showed. And eighth place at state. And we're pretty young. Levi is graduating. Everyone else is returning out of our top seven. So it's, uh, it looks promising. We just, we would like more participants, girls and boys. And that's really the main goal of getting people out and being healthy and choosing a healthy life. So that's what, that's what we're trying to do.
Sometimes cross-country gets overlooked a little bit too, but just some history. It's been 10 plus years that we've sent either a team or an individual to the state tournament. So I think that's something to be proud of as well. So they did a great job. It was a great season. So...
I thought the other thing you should be nice to is, I was just gonna quote, collective year GPAs, looking 40, 40...
Three, nine, six or something like that.
Who got the B+?
So, I mean, I think just an outstanding group of young men and coaches. And I just wanna say, I see the class ranks and I see you're great. So I just wanna say thanks for that too. Not just athletes, but scholar athletes who...
So they're not crazy then?
No, they're driven.
They're driven, yeah. Congratulations, gentlemen.
Is that all of them, Mr. Rankin?
Yep.
And then, yeah, you can feel free to step out. That's just fine. Our last recognition tonight, I wanna point out again, another person who's not in the room. But we are recognizing Kim Bull's Andelcheck, director of our school board, on our school board. She usually sits right over there. She has been board chair, she has been a clerk treasurer numerous times. And Mr. Erholtz and I did nominate her for the MSBA, MSBA All-State School Board. And unfortunately, she did not get selected to be on that. But we thought it very appropriate to still honor her and recognize her here locally for, I think, 11, 10 or 11, 11 years on the school board. Maybe more than that, yeah. So with that, that ends our recognitions, I think. Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. Okay, number four, reports and information items. First up is the Student Council Report. Do we have a representative? Oh, Barb, Barbara.
Come on up.
Um, well, yeah. So my name's Barbara Miller. I'm the Student Council President. And I guess with Student Council, we just got back from our Student Council Convention that was held at Stock Rapids Rice, where it's like all our local Student Councils kinda get together. And we share ideas and different stuff like that. And then currently this week, we actually are running a food drive that is going on as like a little competition between the grades, which will be done by the end of the week to raise food and stuff for the holidays here. And then our next event will be a blood drive on December 7th, I believe the date is. The community blood drive that we've done in the past. And so we'll have that again. And then we'll have our winter ball dance held on December 12th at the Pine Peaks Event Center. And other than that, we don't have a whole lot going on. But we're trying to keep things going as the holiday seasons are approaching, yet trying not to cause too many disruptions. Are there any questions?
Are there any questions? Kurt?
You guys deserve a little bit of a break after a really successful fall. Holiday celebrations that you have. So the, what was the conference? Is that at St. Daniel?
Yeah, we, um, it's actually twice a year. So there's the Fall Convention, the Spring Convention. Basically all the areas, Student Councils in our little division, it's called Central Division. We get together and we usually, we have a speaker that comes. And then we talk about different like hot topic issues, things that we can help improve in the school, different ideas that have gotten well for each of our Student Councils, things that we could do better. And like one of the ideas that we're thinking about bringing on is a school color run or doing something kind of like that come springtime, maybe raising money for different stuff. But yeah, it's just a nice way to get all the Student Councils together, meet new people, and yet still be an effective way of sharing ideas and stuff like that.
Do you have a sense of how many schools or...
Um, in our division, there were, I wanna say, we had like 12 schools there. I'm not sure of how many are total. Many of those schools are like Sartell, Stock Rapids, St. Cloud, Apollo, a lot of St. Cloud area schools, but also schools like Walker and like BBD and stuff like that.
And Barbara also spoke at her Veterans Day program and she did a very nice job there as well. So anything else?
Hey, I just wanted to mention that Homecoming has been set for next year. It's Saturday, September 24th. So the Student Council worked really hard and all their hard work, people recognize it and be ready to do a game.
Congratulations. Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you. That leads us to 4B, the Superintendent Report. Mr. Lindholm?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have just a few things. First of all, this week, the week of the 16th through the 20th, is American Education Week or Educator Week. It's a, it's a week when set aside, it's championed by the National Education Association. It's this week set aside when we honor the people that dedicate their lives to this calling, the calling of educating children. So to all of our, our staff in the room, all of our teachers in the room, our administrators in the room, this is the week when we nationally say thank you for doing the work you do. So on behalf of the board and the district, thank you. Thank you so much for choosing to make a difference in the life of kids. An important role as superintendent in any district is to build purposeful connections with different members or different groups in the community. And I've taken that on in Pequot Lakes in a couple of ways. One, a year ago, last winter, I joined the Central Lakes Rotary Club. I'm also part of the Pequot Lakes Economic Development Council. And I try to be part of those, those conversations to make sure that the district voice is at the table when those things are happening. But more recently, I was just asked to join the Pequot Lakes Chamber Advisory Group. And that group represents our local business communities to the Brainerd Lakes Area Chamber, the larger entity. And just as a feedback loop to our board, I think it's good for you to know that you may hear about the Lakes Proud Campaign through the chamber. And what that is, is a, it's, it's a local campaign by our chamber to basically purchase things locally, champion, you know, servicing and doing work with our local business owners and our local providers. So that's, you'll hear some things about that. You'll hear some other school districts talking about that. And that's what that's all about. I wanna thank Director Valerie Wallene and Vice Chair Kurt Johnson for joining me at the Legislative Roundtable last Tuesday in Aiken. Representative Dale Luick and Senator, State Senator Kerry Rude pulled together an event where they brought in the Chair of the Education Finance Committee, Jennifer Loon, and the Chair of the Education Innovation Policy Committee, her name is Sandra Erickson, to come and listen to the school leaders in this area. And I wanna think, I think eight or nine or 10 districts were in the room. A lot of board members, superintendents, some principals were in the room voicing our input about the next legislative session. I, I think the major themes in the discussion would be no surprise to people, the ruling by HLC on qualifications for teaching concurrent enrollment classes at the high school was a very hot topic, not just in Pequot, but in every single district in the, in the region. The, the teacher shortage and, and how to get a license to teach in Minnesota if you're coming from out of state, some of those issues were a hot topic. And of course, early childhood was a very hot topic in the room when we were there. But we were represented well by Director Wallene and our Vice Chair Kurt Johnson, who engaged in the conversation. So thank you for being there and speaking on our behalf, Mr. Johnson. Beauty and the Beast, I just wanna put a shout out. It's a wonderful, wonderful show. My wife and I had a chance to see it on Friday night with the Rotary Group that were there. It's still running, I think, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday of this coming weekend. Assistant Director of the show is up here at our board table and it, just a wonderful, wonderful evening. So make some time to go see that. And then last but not least, I wanna just announce publicly and help spread the word that the City of Pequot Lakes has posted several opportunities to be involved in local government processes on their boards and commissions. They have the Planning Commission, the Park Commission, Economic Development, Housing and Redevelopment Authority, and the Library Board. They're all accepting applications for those slots. So if anyone's interested in that, go to the City of Pequot Lakes website.
Thank you. Yeah, no, thank you Superintendent Lindholm. Any questions from anyone? Any comments? The roundtable, you mentioned three topics. Was, was school funding brought up at all?
Absolutely. Yeah. That's kind of the given, right?
How'd that go?
Well, there was a lot of educators in the room. So everyone wants more. Yeah, it came up. It's not an, it's not a funding year per se. It's an every other year process. That said, there's a surplus at the legislative level and so it was spoken to. You bet.
Well, and it's, you know, it's always, it's portrayed as a want, and I know you didn't really mean that, but it's a need.
It's a need.
And currently, in my opinion, it's a underfunded need. So I was just curious if it came up.
Indeed.
That's my plug. Okay, so... Yes, Kurt.
I'll tell you on it real quick. I will tell you this, that Representative Loon, Representative Peterson...
Erickson.
Erickson.
Yep.
Now, they, they weren't there just for lip service, I'll tell you that. I mean, they, they're of substance. I think she does a fine job in her capacity, Representative Loon. And she said it once. And I mean, how long have we been there? Two hours? And there was some real meat that was putting her lunch pail to head back to St. Paul. You know, whether or not that carries through, I hope so. But I think it would be, those of you that would've been there to see it, it wasn't what you might expect as a typical legislative capacity, you know, where you get the...
They were very engaged. Yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah. No doubt.
Well, thank you. Thank you for helping me, or helping us make the point, Kurt. Yes. I'm gonna turn it over to High School Principal Chip Rankin at this point for 4C High School Improvement Plan, please.
Good evening, Chairman Erholtz.
Thank you. Yeah.
I got, uh, some of my building leadership team are gonna join me tonight. I have, uh, thank you, Starf Math teacher here at the high school, Sarah Cadmore Erickson, uh, special ed educator at the high school. I have LaVon Murray, our school counselor. Uh, the members are my, uh, my s- uh, school leadership team, my BLT building leadership team. And, uh, I think we got a copy of the report, uh, made a little team from Brandal last week. Last year at Pequot, we, uh, we called it high school.
That's fine.
We had three primary goals. The first one was really taking a look at, uh, our, our development as a staff, as a team, as a building. And that was the foundation that I had. Goal number two was looking at achievement of all students and so we focused on grad rate. Test scores, you know, so post-graduate readiness, you know, looking at how our students score on a number of standardized tests. And then a major goal was reading, reaching the benchmarks in all the areas of the ACT. And then the goal number three, you know, was focused on the safety and welcoming of our here at the high school. All three of these were kinda nested within the district's strategic plan. And kinda just came to report back tonight, uh, how, how we performed on, on last year in these, these goals. Goal number one was the implementation of PLCs and most of our screen work on instruction. You know, this is a lot about us as a staff, improving our skills, quality of our instruction to, to raise student achievement. And I wanna ask our teachers to share tonight, kinda that, that role map that you followed last year. So tell us what a couple of staff members here kinda shared in their perspective.
Last year, um, one of the, our main goal was to take our BLT and our DLT, which were new, uh, groups last year, kind of our leadership group, and really get them in comfortable with Marzano, get comfortable with the vocabulary, get comfortable with the process, to get comfortable with just all the, because it's a big implementation plan. And so that if we, if we as the leaders felt comfortable when we went back to our colleagues and if we felt comfortable talking to it about it, it would be more, you know, easier for them to understand. And last year was intense for us. I mean, it was tons of, I mean, it was all stuff that we already do, but the, just learning the right vocabulary and what was the domain and what was the design question and blah, blah, blah. You know, just learning all vocabulary, blah, 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 was really intense. So that took up most of our year just for us to really be able to get a hold of it.
Kind of, yeah, learn the vocabulary and then we did create growth plans because it was all new to us. We did our growth plans, but then have redone them for this year. So kind of doing a little bit better job of not implementing the growth plans.
And we had to use iObserve, which was, um, the technology piece for all of the coaching. It's how we get evaluated, but it's also how we can do our peer coaching. And so just practicing using that technology and getting people comfortable using that technology and putting their, what they, how they wanna grow, to put that in their computer and share with their principal or each other for peer coaching, that kind of thing. That it was, that was a lot of work to get everybody comfortable doing that.
I also think key to this too is, um, you know, last year was the first day to maybe we had some PD days built into our school schedule and into our school calendar. Uh, I just wanna say thank you to the board and the superintendent, like all we're bringing forward. Well, it's tough, uh, school previous, things like, so as you're trying to continue to build or refine it, it's, it's hard. Cause you, the kids are gonna keep coming and they want their comp paper back. Um, you know, and so to keep this improvement going. So I wanna say thank you. And I think we use it extremely wisely.
Oh, so nice this year.
We would take 10 more days if we could. But, uh, I also thank you for that.
It's needed and necessary for us just to be able to move forward with Marzano, for our work in general. Yeah, well, it was the first time this year, this fall was the first time that 5:12, we could all sit down as a staff, 5:12, and all work on the same thing at the same time. And it was, it was really nice to have those conversations, you know, for me being in the high school, you know, there's that imaginary horse to be able to, that we can't cross over the middle level. But, you know, just for us to be able to sit down and, hey, wouldn't you read your growth plan? Hey, no, I'm gonna do that too. And, you know, it was just, just the collaboration, being able to have that close conversations is huge.
And then I think it was more understandable to all staff, not just people that were kinda ready for it or had the tools necessary to fill it out, all staff were, um, more prepared to do it. And your thoughts, ideas off each other so that they were more engaged to be able to get the growth plan to compete.
I think what's key for all members of the board to understand too is we're really focused on their 41 plans of Marzano. Really, it's a framework, right? Uh, 41, you're like, wow. Yeah, I would tell you that way now, we've made a conscious move for the district that was really about to focus on design question one and two. And it's really about, you know, setting learning targets and goals and how we're going to achieve that. And the reason we chose design question one and two is because the research tells us that that will give us a big return on our investment. So that's really what we focused on last year. And I think it went okay. You know, it's tough, running learning goals and scales for every unit. Can we just a little talk on how you label that and how you come up with it? So that is an ongoing process. I think we've come a long ways though.
And then with our peer coaching, that's what we're going to continue to, to look at. BLT members, um, who just had some training last week that we were all given the second half of the day at the middle level in high school. People being trained in the morning, but all the BLT members have been training on that. So...
Yeah, go ahead, Kurt.
Just quickly, I'd like to go back to the, um, the time you spoke about the amount of nexus that you were trying to deal with and getting that understood. And are you getting, are you getting by? I mean, is there oxygen in the room from, from the panels of staff that you're trying to get to? Is, is it...
There's more than there has been. Yeah. I mean, for me personally, I know that I spent a lot of time this summer doing a lot of stuff. So there was, um, there was, you know, I'm keeping up.
You get some cardio and some mojo in the room, right? Is that what's, is it...
Yeah, yeah. But for people, I mean, for people with small children or, you know, people who can't, you know, sit down for, you know, a few days in the summer or something, that's, it, it's, it's, this stuff, all this stuff between the PLC and the BLT and doing the digital curriculum library and the, it's a lot. It's a lot.
We know. And we're, we're more concerned that, that we don't have six really superstars in the panels just kinda watching the superstars perform versus the thing.
The PD days really help. When we can all sit down together and all do stuff, those are huge.
So you're, we got a good investment back on that.
Oh, yeah.
And refresh my memory again, how many and when are they again during the year?
Uh, we're taking three. So you, we have one for MBE.
Okay.
There will be a big thing on, uh, around March, looking, holiday, 26th of February. Chris, I think we have one in April.
Okay.
So those are...
Is it fully fully attended? I mean, do we get 85% of people?
Oh, 95%.
Or...
Yeah.
It's understand that that's not, okay, let's take a personal day that day. Well, no, I can. But I mean, something, things happen. Oh, yeah. But I'm just saying, I, I think staff too, you know, that this is...
Trying to get my family to get a spot, work spot, that's what I do.
It's kind of one of the things that, you know, you can cut up, um, even feel overwhelmed. So people wanna stay cut up, right? And using that time in their, um, professional days to, to get a lot of the, the stuff done and to stay cut up.
Uh, this slide here, I just wanted to illustrate that there's a lot of things going on. You know, if you come over here, Marzano Research, so we're, we've implemented the Marzano framework. If we stepped two years ago, you know, there was a mandate from the state that we had to adopt a teacher observation platform. You know, I would tell you that, I, you know, my teacher, you know, the Marzano framework obviously meets that need. That's about one percent of what it does. The ninety-nine percent that's behind that is it's a way of professional for every staff member. It dials into what instruction should look like based on research. Down here below, the digital curriculum library, you know, that's not something that you probably see a lot of, but for every course that we have in our school district from kindergarten down there with my, my daughter from next year down to our seniors that will just take here, every course is in the digital curriculum library, looks at writing goals and targets. And they're based on the standards. And what we would do, instead of just Nikki writing the tenth grade geometry test, us four math teachers would write that geometry. And that takes time, right? Cause you're gonna do that for every single course. Everybody pretty much in the high school is a singleton. She's the only geometry teacher we have, so she teaches all the tenth graders. So while it's easy, it's also difficult. And then you look over here at PLCs. You know, the challenge with PLCs is it, it, it takes time. And the second thing is, um, you, you, you gotta, as we're starting to peel back, you know, Marzano, it just takes some time to get good on this. And so on my BLT at the high school, we will turn hard on this and getting, and have our staff to help lead this. And so I just wanna say kudos to them. And the investment we've managed of BLTs and DLTs, it's helped. So in mine, at the high school, you have six members on the BLT. And here in the high school, it waits to come out, English and science, social, and I have a lot of good teachers and specialized teachers. So tonight I have my specialized teacher, Sarah, my math teacher, and the P, Levon, she comes in and helps me a lot with BLT. She's not necessarily a member of the BLT, but she's, she's like an adopted member.
Is she the group counselor?
Another piece, now, is the right-hand corner of the rule. So, you know, Akash, a decision to make, we're all gonna go not just, and you've got, it's a learning management system, and we're going to follow our courses. And, you know, you know, I've got a teacher off my right who is a pioneer in this. And, you know, part of the strategic plan is starting to go to hybrid courses. And I think we could actually be ready to do that next year. Or you could have some kids taking some hybrid courses that are not just, oh, we already do that now in high school. You have a lot of kids will take, uh, a college course. You guys taking any digital classes?
PSCOs.
You taking any PSCO courses online yet? So, you know, some of these kids are already doing this, um, through desire to learn, cause that's what CLC uses. Now we have high school kids who potentially be hybrid also. So, you know, I think we're, we're, we're ahead in that area. So that pretty much wraps up, uh, goal area number one. I think a lot of goal area number one is just something you don't normally see. And that's why I wanted to make sure that our staff can give you some honest feedback when we're at. I would tell you that I think, um, Marzano started slow. And I think that we're on about another three to five-year journey to get to where we are feeling real comfortable with it. So it's gonna take some time. I mean, we're only dealing with element one two, design question one two, um, is a big real one.
And I think if you go too fast, you get into bad habits of not doing, kind of doing the framework justice.
Um.
Well, and I think, you know, from a board's perspective, it's, it's confusing enough just keeping up with what you're telling us. And I know that this is, comes from a mandate from the state to evaluate teachers and their successes in some fashion. So we settled on Marzano, correct? And now that we have settled on Marzano, that means you're doing all the heavy lifting and we're just here trying to keep up with the report. So, I mean, I appreciate what you're doing, obviously.
Goal area number two is student achievement. So, you know, we take a look at, we had three goals there. Graduation rate grew, uh, graduation rate improved from ninety-two to ninety-five. Uh, I can report that, you know, we're at ninety-seven point three last year's graduation. Uh, that would've been actually class of twenty-fourteen, class of twenty-fifteen. And I don't wanna get an egg in my face, but I think we're a hundred percent. I think what will come out in, uh, the next month is that we are a hundred percent graduation last year now. That does not equate to a hundred percent kids who are in senior class graduating. There are some kids that go on continuation plans. You know, there are some kids that, you know, blah, 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 can be at school till they're twenty-one. So they will continue to go, cause they, they continue to receive services. Some kids will transfer, go to their high school and go to ALC. But every single kid that was scheduled to graduate last year, who walked in as a senior last year, graduated, not a single one dropped out. So that's the dream here for next year's part of it. And that would be, even with ninety-seven point three, it's, it's the highest graduation rate you're gonna find. So we get a hundred percent, but you mean, you, you're not gonna, you're gonna find, uh, not many schools, the average graduation rate for the United States is like seventy-three percent. And there's been goals in that. In the cities, it's about eighty percent. So.
Even in our area, I think it was about eighty-five percent the average.
Oh, absolutely.
We are doing very well.
I still have Mr. Rankin's, uh, TV interview on my phone. I look back at it, uh, and it, you know, it's, the last two years, okay, I don't think it's gonna be an anomaly moving forward, but I can remember having conversations with you the middle, towards the end of the first decade of this century, and it was a different story. It was slightly different, but it's trending in the right direction.
Our post-secondary readiness improved from ninety-two to ninety-four percent. You know, that's really based on exit interviews with students as they continue to, as they get to graduation. And then we wanna reach benchmarks in all of the areas of the ACT. And we've never done that. We want our composite score to be higher than state average.
Good going.
One of our successes and celebrations for it. You know, this slide, if you take a look at, uh, see the MMR data, and all that is is multiple measurements. And what they take a look at is areas of proficiency, and that's how you score on standardized tests, F scores. Um, growth is how much you're gonna grow, um, each year in those growth areas that, um, the state picks. The difficulty that we have, and the reason why that's low, is when you have individuals that are extremely high, then the growth of those that reach that, you get that separation, which causes the, you know, the achievement gap. One of the areas that we have in our school district, not just the high school, is our two gaps that we contain, is from our specialized free re-responding students. Students in those categories specifically perform lower than their peers that are not in those categories. Um, the other thing is, we have super high levels of achievement. Last year, we had eleven students that scored thirty or better in the ACT. You know, with that, there's no need, that ratio. Uh, if you take a look at, uh, the ACT report that I, that you'll see in a few minutes, more than a top thirty school in, in Minnesota, last year based on the ACT. And I'm not talking just top thirty in growing county, top thirty in Minnesota. And so when you have high achievement like that, what happens is a C doesn't look very good. Um, and then you can see graduation when you max out the points. Uh, the next slide here, you look at graduation rate, uh, from two thousand ten to two thousand fourteen, you'll see that it has moved up from ninety-two point one to ninety-seven point three. And that's it. I believe in the world being ninety-seven point three, a hundred percent. Now, one of the reasons I believe that you're seeing this data is two years ago, you made, you made, five years ago, when I first came here, the very first thing I did is, uh, I invested in credit recovery program. My very first day as a principal at Pinkell Space School, I had seventeen referrals to ALC. The problem is almost seventeen kids leave. Their, 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 their success rate, I've had two kids graduate from ALC in my six years here. We wanna service every kid here we can. Now, I realize there are things like, and I'm not saying the ALC is about this, it's a great place for a white kid, but that should be for the very small amount. So we invested in credit recovery. So if you have a student who fails a class year, they will go next semester start getting some credit recovery back. I also do a pretty progressive model. You get a fifty-four percent in, say, biology, and then you make up six percent, you make up ten percent. If you missed, if you got a forty-seven percent, you make up twenty percent in class. You're in there for a whole semester, and you find the areas in which you failed, and you have to re, redo those areas to get them credit back. The second thing is, is when we made an investment two years ago, seven period day, what, that's a big thing, a, a lot bigger than most people think. In our high school, we didn't grow that much. But when you take Nikki, who used to teach, uh, five hours a day, and have prep, that was five. When you go to seven periods, a lot of these teachers, now they still get their prep, but you add an hour to every teacher, you add an every hour to every teacher, all forty of mine, that's forty hours I got to use. And so what I took is a systems intervention. So I have full top math. I have, uh, you know, Florence and Sarah has gone and taught English with my English teachers. So we take our free re-responding, special ed, we prepare them with the two teachers and possibly a parent. So we really target, and they're using the exact same curriculum they would get in their tenth grade English class, but with two teachers, they can get to individual needs. A lot easier than, you know, if you smatter those, say those thirteen kids, fourteen kids into five hours, rather than you got two kids every hour that, you know, on top of the twenty-six hour that they're to get to. And you wanna touch on that?
Yeah, so, um, it's just called the push-in model, where we kind of pushed in, um, our specialist students that we felt that they, you know, had the ability and skill to, to get into the general ed classroom. Um, so they are learning, uh, they have the same benchmarks as any general ed student, um, and they're receiving the same instruction as a general ed student. Um, and that we're trying to, to use that model so that we can decrease or, you know, make the gap smaller between our, between our special ed, um, students or any student who's struggling in that specific subject with English, math, social, or science. So we have it across our four, four, um, classes in ninth and tenth grade, um, where we have a special teacher going into English nine, um, the intermediate algebra, and then social nine and science nine, and then the same thing in tenth grade. And then in eleventh grade, we're providing more peer support, um, cause we're really trying to focus on the ninth and tenth graders as they're transitioning into the high school, and then, um, kinda getting used to being back into the general ed classroom. And then, um, a majority of those students also have a structured study or a power hour, where we, um, I have them in my classroom, where the teacher who's in the, uh, general ed math class, where we're available those hours. And we have those students, ninth and tenth graders, scheduled with us so that we can continue to work and support, work with them and support them, um, in specifically English and math. Um, cause those seem to be the biggest triggers for, um, frustration and, and, um, where the areas of disability are. So we started that last year, and because of that seven period day, we had a little bit more wiggle room with that. Um, and then what Mr. Rankin said as well is by giving us that seven period day, we were able to, if a student does, um, fail a class, we put them into the Odyssey, where our credit recovery program the next semester so that they don't, um, have to go up to ALC to take the class, first of all, and that they can get that credit recovery quickly. And because we have that seven period day, they can do that and still have an elective or two. So that was really critical to get the seven period day to help with the credit recovery, and for us specifically in special ed. Um, and by all four students, be able to give them support that they need in their general ed classes.
The next area too is we have a thing called focus. And, uh, we need a focus teacher, which is, it stands for basic and a challenge of unconditional support. What we do is do the SAT process, and we have students who look back, they're potentially failing a class or two, their attendance is not what we'd want to be, and they assign them a focus hour, uh, serve teachers where we put, like, your kids together. And what it is is, uh, Nikki, what's my comment? You do our focus.
Sure. I have, um, currently I have eight kids in my focus hour. And so every day when they come in, um, I look on Skybird and we go through, I talk to each kid individually, you know, you're missing this assignment, you need to talk to this teacher, this teacher said you need to make up a test. Most of them have attendance issues, so they're usually missing multiple assignments. And it's just, um, more of a structured study time for them, where I can sit with one on one with them and, you know, and just talk to them, uh, create a rapport with them, and help them get, keep on top of their homework so they don't get overwhelmed and shut off.
And what time of the day did that happen again? Sorry?
It happens throughout the day.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Every hour, we try to have one every hour, so we can take kids at different hours. And our goal is, all those kids are gonna go and do their homework. They may not live in environments where they have homework, or they got a job, or they, they just can't, make sure that, you know, that practice here.
So the focus program, is it a at need or at risk, or is it every individual?
No, it's a at risk.
Okay.
And it's for general ed students. We have power hours, um, for special ed students, and that's just how we kind of decipher the schedules, um, and just knowing, kind of what the needs are. But so focus is for general ed students, and, uh, general teachers are teaching that, where if it's a special ed student, it's a power hour class, um, which is taught by a special ed teacher, or provided and supplied to a special ed teacher.
That's the, uh, we have somebody on you every single day.
And we try to identify, and, and so that ultimately through the, um, to the SAT, um, team, that's how we try to identify. So kids don't follow the tracks.
Right.
You know, at that point that we aren't identifying that, then we don't.
Well, Chip uses the term on you, but I think they realize that there's somebody in their corner, and that's a good thing too. Pardon me.
The twenty-fourteen, fifteen MCA data, I just wanna point something out. I mean, there's massive changes to testing. One went from MCA two to MCA three, and I put the statewide testing trend, all the test scores were now much better. And part of this is they went from the MCA two to the MCA three. The other thing is, there are glitches in testing, you heard a lot, and the signs went down. And you know, now it's longer to graduate. So if I do a test that's gonna take you three hours, and you ask me if you need to graduate, and I say no, how do you think you're gonna do? You know, I'm not saying that that's what happens, but this is a test that's not really recorded, and it doesn't go anywhere other than our own use. So sometimes we can dipstick kids that maybe don't really care about this particular area, that maybe don't perform as well. Overall, actually, our test scores all went fairly well. I mean, one of the things I wanna bring into the board's attention is tomorrow we're having a discussion that starts, part of our strategic role math, you played out, is, you know, our personalized learning. One of the things when you talk, um, you know, and Mrs. has shared last month, we see some of these students who, they don't, they don't perform well in some areas because it's not an area that they really say they care about. I mean, we can use focus, and we can use pushing, and we can do this, and we can drag you to math, but if you really don't value that's important to you with your personalized learning, because you wanna go do this, and you don't see how it's valued. I mean, I think this is one of the ways we're gonna work on this, right? Make, make it relevant for those students. And so that's something we're starting to conversation on this year. It's part of our strategic role math you played out, and we'll be visiting this, and we want to think to report after next year. For our test scores, we're fine. We're just not, not exactly a good one. The next is the ACT. And what I, uh, I provide can do is, the composite score last year was a twenty-four out of thirty-six. Now, the way this works is when you get the test scores from twenty-four, twenty-fourteen, twenty-fifteen, you know, it says seventy-six tested, well, that's seventy-six seniors out of the class of twenty-fifteen, cause that's how that works. So there were more kids than seventy-six that tested, but these are the seventy-six members of the class of twenty-fifteen at P quadly space school, this is what they scored. And I would tell you that, um, I was gonna send you something, and I got an analysis back that the state does. We had the highest ACT probably north of Sartell, uh, the Canadian port, uh, one of the top thirty schools. And, and, you know what, I would say, if it's a lesson learned for me, it's, it's amazing how certain ways that kids come through, they're just hyper fours. I would like to pat myself on the back, but I would really like to pat those parents on the back, because they raised some amazing kids who did really well. I mean, we don't get eleven kids, uh, thirty or better in ACT all the time. I mean, even this year's senior class, I don't wanna tell on them, but I know a lot of them too. You know, so, um, same kids, same curriculum, same school, and just how it builds like this is always very interesting. But out of last year's class, we were above the state average in every single area. And our composite score was higher than state average for the first time that I, I've known. This is the highest. I mean, we're usually in the twenty-twos, and last year the twenty-four. So, great stuff. Nikki, I'm gonna celebrate.
So now the ACT is no longer a required test for graduation either?
Well, next year's, next year's board report, I hope I'm not the principal, cause I don't wanna report on. The class of twenty sixteen, or what, I didn't take it last spring.
Right.
And I have their results in the back of my desk, and we're not gonna talk about them tonight. I'll be here to delay it. Because what happens, we force everybody to take the ACT, and some kids walked out. And some kids didn't wanna take it. And, and you know what? Um, five years ago, I would've said, everybody take it. Even three years ago, I would've said, everybody take it. You know, now when we start talking about personalized learning, I don't need the ACT to go to a Indiana technical college to do this. So why am I taking a four-hour exam? That you're telling me that I'm not qualified to go to a university? So, so I have mixed feelings about it. And so we're gonna get back to the students wanting to take the ACT, we're encouraged to take it. We still do that this coming spring. But I think forcing every kid, even some of our kids that have struggles writing their own name, you take the ACT, it's not a wise investment, it's a tax. I mean, there's some bright kids out there that should take this, and there's some kids that we should find the appropriate assessment for them to take. And, you know.
So, for clarity, to answer your question, the statute changed. We have to do a test, but not the ACT for every kid. So that's.
So a test, one of a few?
We have the ASBAP, we have the ACT, we have the NCRC, which is your, it's the National Career Readiness Assessment. And that, that would allow for every kid to find what's the right assessment for me, if I'm gonna work for you, or if I'm gonna go take your job. I mean, those are different. What's the right assessment? So, um, we did really well on the ACT last year.
Yeah.
We did the best, we were fun and I think in our school's history.
Noah, congratulations.
I even want those kids. Uh, I'm just gonna wrap this up. Our post-secondary rate continues to grow and we're in our third year ramp up. I think it's gone really well. And I think it's because we're in our third year, we're really held there. If I'm managing your own.
One thing about, uh, ramp up is the collaboration that our whole staff does as far as, you know, it's not just me advising what kids should do as far as their post-secondary plan. It's our whole staff and, and it's so nice to see. And, and everybody works with our students and so our students feel comfortable and want to teach us about anybody. And, and, and quote, they have a relationship and asking questions as well as.
Now, we were designated a ramp up school, correct? What, three years ago?
Well, I actually, we applied for a grant.
Or refresh my memory.
I did a lot of everything, we got selected and so we got in right away. Cause I was a principal's academy grad, that's a spin-off program.
Oh yeah, that's right.
So we have to have it. These are the five pillars, uh, that we really hold in on. Academic readiness, admissions readiness, career readiness, financial readiness, and personal social readiness. So we work on lessons about every three weeks. Uh, Chris Palmer, behind my shoulder, is our ramp-up coordinator. So she goes through the curriculum, it's varied by age. Um, the middle school is in, I think, year two, or year one, year two? Year two, yeah. So they're, they started six, eight, so you're gonna start to see more and more of those, those pieces that should color, post-secondary where you go up.
Are other area schools getting involved in this or are we the only one?
Uh, there's some, but most of them would be year one, maybe year two.
Yeah, and it's more and more, um, yeah, the state is, is really pushing around a lot. And, and so we're, we're getting more and more, um, districts in the area of that.
Some people come and visit us to see what we're doing.
Absolutely.
And JPA is just, they're kind of supporting it and so they've tapped our team to come fill in others a couple times.
Well, post-secondary success, I mean, they have radio station shows about it and I'm just yelling at the radio, you know, call. Call the high school, ask them about ramp up for readiness.
This is, uh, this is just one of the tools, kids continue to fill out, um, CLC, uh, takes a look at their post-readiness plan. And these are the outcomes we're reading after. Uh, the final goal, uh, was pulling up through the safe and respectful apartment. Yeah. And rightfully, we did have two suicides last year in school. Um, neither were school-related, but, uh, the team took a look at, you know, what can we do as a school to, to further, uh, take a look at the total child? And so I just wanna point out, um, you know, one of the challenges you have, like in our second one, the recent number of absent students. These tardies from two ninety-two to less than two fifty, well, when we went from a six-period day to a seven-period day, just one more passing time, it's logical that your tardies will go up. So, and we are on a five-year trend where, I mean, the last two years our discipline has gone down. When you add the seven-period day, seventy-two percent of our referral people at Peabody Space School has some of them associated with dependence. Unlaid class, misclass, that's, that's, that's a good thing because, I mean, it's the majority of our minors. But, you know, you take a look at the current programs we have here, we have Linker, which Levon is, is really done a great job. By taking seniors, we're doing with ninth graders. We just had a Linker retreat, a week ago with our ninth graders and they've gotten very good reviews.
Oh yes, yeah, parents actually emailed and talked about what a great day it's been.
We continue to have PBIS here, uh, and that's just positive behavior intervention supports. And that's just basically how we recognize, you do positive things to do instead of just isolating the negative, we'll get results. We have no other pint, uh, mental health services here, our school, for our students to see. And I think they were critical, uh, last year we had, uh, two critical events. They were able to help our staff, our students, just take that pressure off. The collaborative workers here are, are, are critical for us. We also use LARJP. Last year we also implemented, we had, uh, youth frontiers. So now we're doing the ninth grade respect retreat and our twelfth grade listening retreat, uh, while received. Um, we have Swiss data to take a look at our referrals, you know, um. The gist I'll tell you is that, you know, our, our majors, last year I suspended nine kids out of school. And, uh, my threshold for that is they either need to do something else. Uh, my first year here, we suspended over seventy kids. So we're on a downward trend. We average less than one per year, uh, and it lasts less than seven seconds. Drug dogs here six times a year, I don't find drugs in three years. I'm not saying they don't exist. But, you know, um, we try as hard as we can to keep that from being here. And, and in the back three slides, it just gives you a good idea where we're going for this year. I think the key piece for us is that, uh, we're nasty with the district, uh, strategic plan. And our team's taking a look at how we support that. And you can see that's why the, the layout just has changed differently to mirror what the district's strategic roadmap looks like and how we support that. So, you know, I, I just include that so you have an idea of what we're gonna work on and where we're going, so. Sub句 question, that's what happened.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, are there any questions?
Just a couple.
Yeah, go ahead.
Comment, uh, uh, in, in relationship to what you're speaking, giving the graduation rate, the attention that you're paying to these kids. I'm always stranded here trying to find the enrollment, uh, documents. I knew a lot of the seniors are enrolled in our school, what, what's that number?
This year?
Yeah.
One twelve.
One twelve. Okay, so you got, uh, ninety-seven percent. Um, you got, you got four kids you're talking about. Did you get them up? And you guys, everybody isn't much attention to that four kids as you do anybody else in the class. And that's the, I mean, that, that to me, that's great.
If not, if not more.
And then, and, and I know you have to say it, cause you get, but, uh, that's great, great.
Anything else Kurt?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, absolutely Brendan.
Thank you for the, the very thorough report and I appreciate all of our work that you're putting into raising the bar for, for all of our kids. Um, what is it that we as a school board, can you, is there anything that, that you're not, any resources you're not getting or any support you're not receiving? That we can help provide to help you be more effective at your job?
I think the only we're gonna need, we need your expertise as non-educators. One of the struggles that I'm having right now is I, I have a not successful story this year. I have a junior who went to the SC. And this young man's a hardworking kid, but he did not learn math. He cared less to ever write, ever, you know. And we continue to round the square and go around a hole. And honestly, um, there's a kid that's, has value in our community that if we could teach a trade. So sometimes what I find is we are just continuing to turn out the same, uh, every kid. And we all know they're going different for us. So when I force it to be four years of English, when they do not want to. You know, how do we differentiate? And that's how, when we look at this personalized learning, the expertise that you bring from being a, uh, homeowner company. You know, uh, being a professional, you know, healthcare provider. The, the things each, every one of you does. How do we get those kids who maybe do not want to sit through that great mission? How do we look at that differently? Because that kid's been living in our community with or without an education. And if we continue to push them to take advanced algebra, and I look at all of you, when's the last time you did advanced algebra? But it's the most critical thing, you know, left grade.
A week, every day.
So I think that's a critical piece if we go forward. Otherwise, we're gonna continue to have that same gap. You know, when you don't value it, how much energy do you put into it? And I think that's something we're really wrestling with. So I think it's not a very good answer, but I need you to, as a non-educator, to think about your future employees, your neighbors, you know, your own kids, uh, about what that looks like for a diploma here. Because I don't think it has to all of us. You know, if, if, if I truly desire to go, um, work at one automotive, I mean, three years ago we had one of the best workers come to our school. And it was a stroll to the end of graduate. Now he's doing extremely well, but he was top, you know, that's what I mean there. And that's what we challenge around too, so. It's not a very good answer, but I think that's one area we could look at.
Is some alternative pathway towards a diploma that doesn't squirrel the whole educational system? Oh, okay, well, let me get on that. No, I, I, and I know that was pretty flipped, but I mean, I'm just sitting here thinking, I don't know what to tell you. But we'll definitely take it under serious advisement, go ahead Kurt.
Mr. Chair, yeah, again, that was a subject that our legislative roundtable, how we have done away with the vocational side of the thing. And, and we talked about what Mr. Scollan does, and quite frankly, this, I was just on the phone the other day with one of my closest friends in life, who is a professor of carpentry, I call him, at, uh, at, um, St. Cloud State Tech. They're doing away with his program.
Yeah.
Shocked.
Yeah, well, you can't hire a industrial technician, there's nobody that's turning molding apart.
Yeah, and he's got, he's got a full class every time. And I told him, Mr. We're, we're literally building a house and he was stunned. He said, you guys do that at your high school? I said, yeah. But I gotta pull teeth just to do that in my specific vocational class. At secondary education at St. Cloud Technical College, to build a house, cause that's what I'm supposed to teach these kids to do. Internally, carpentry and trades. So, in the context of what I think you're speaking of, my only response would be is find out what this kid or these kid likes. Would love to do it, yeah, is there anything we can do on this end?
I think the investment you made in the seven-period day is something we just can't continue to have because that provides those opportunities. You know, when you go to six-period day, just with enrollment, I could, I mean, I don't wanna, there's four teachers that are gonna go away because you just can't fill their classes, cause you divided, they're just, they can't even access them. That's why, you know, probably lived away when I told you four years ago, we're flourishing. I mean, we have, we have thirty-one kids in two different robotics classes. You know what I mean? Uh, and that's an investment you guys made and now you're seeing returns. We're at the first robotics team this year, uh, competing. You know, those are kinda things, those kids get fired up for that. Well, that doesn't happen about seven-period day. So I think that's why it's critical that you have that, you know, whatever you can do to protect that. Because right now funding's good, right? Well, we've all been in this business long enough to know that it doesn't last forever. And then you gotta make progress, so.
No, there's a lot of successes in your report and we thank you all for your, obviously your hard work. I know you guys are dedicated, I know your fellow staff members are as well. And so thank you.
Thank you team, thank you.
I gotta take a second. Number five is a consent agenda. Board action is required, all items are, have I missed something?
Nope.
All items are considered to be routine and will be acted on by one motion with no separate discussion. In the event any one of us wishes to discuss an item, that item will be moved for separate consideration. Hearing none, I am, uh, looking for a motion to approve consent agenda items as presented.
So move, second.
And Brendan and Derek. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it. That leads us up to number six, and number six are action items and six A resolution awarding sales of bonds. I'll let Superintendent Lindholm introduce our next speaker.
Yeah, our guest here is Gary Olson from Ellers. And, um, he is the expert in this area, so I'm gonna let him kinda walk through. He will explain our bond sales that took place here.
You don't want me to do it?
Nor do you want me to do it. Uh, he will explain, um, what I do know is that we did well, um, and so he'll share some good news. Uh, and then, um, the action needed tonight after his presentation will be a motion to, um, approve the resolution that's in your packet. It's a super long resolution.
Are we reading that?
I don't, I don't recommend we read it, but.
Mr. Chair, I am prepared to read that, all forty-three pages.
I don't wanna steal your thunder Gary, but just as a point of information, how much of this are we reading?
You don't need to, we just need a motion to approve a resolution.
Cause I looked at that.
He'll take care of the details.
Worst case scenario, we're gonna read the title.
I love, I love the sound of Kurt's voice, but that looked like it was gonna go on for a while.
You check out, we call our sale day report. Uh, today we were able to refund two of your previous bond issues, one from two thousand and six and one from two thousand and seven, that are callable on February first, twenty sixteen. We need to get within ninety days of that twenty sixteen date, February one day in order to, uh, do the refunding. And for both issues, the maturities were from twenty seventeen through twenty twenty-two. We did go through the rating process again, like we did when we sold your building bonds. I haven't been here for, I don't think since the last time we sold the third set of bonds here. Walking through and seeing all the links you've done with that money is, is kind of amazing. Uh, but we did spend about an hour on the phone with, uh, Woody's Investor Service. Superintendent and Business Manager were heavily involved in that conversation. Um, you get two ratings, the first one is state credit management rating and that's tied to the state's credit rating. And then you have an underlying rating which is based on strictly information about Peabody Lakes in your school district. You received a double A three, which is very high, especially for an outstate district. Cause a lot of it is not, a lot of it is, uh, related to things that are beyond your control, like the local economy and things. It's much easier for a district in, in a big economy, like the metro area or maybe the St. Cloud, Rochester, to, to get that higher rating. Tougher for officials in outstate to get that, so that, that was, that's a very good thing to have that double A three. We did get four bids today, the best one came from Jeffries out of New York. And so the bids range from one point four seven nine two up to one point five four. The difference, you know, highest bidder was about thirty-nine thousand. Bids were actually pretty tight together. Now, we, we thought originally we were gonna sell a little over ten point six million dollars in bonds, but we received a, a large premium. What that means is instead of paying you principal loan, they're gonna, they're paying you an extra loan above and beyond the principal. And the reason for that is so that they can give their investors a higher rate. But the, the, the actual rate you pay has to be market rate. But the investors are looking for something higher than that and so they're willing to pay additional premiums to buy those bonds to get them. And we can use then that premium along with the lower, along with the interest rates to actually reduce the size of the bond issue. So you sell less bonds in order to pay off your, your existing bond.
So they bought it, yeah.
Yeah, so they essentially bought, they bought the, they bought the size of the bond issue down from.
Four ten million one hundred and nine, something.
Went down to nine million six and bought, bought, if you look here, the second, uh, third line down, you see that the reoffering premium is one million two hundred and fifty-five thousand. So we're gonna use that to reduce the size of the bond issue. The actual cost of issuance were about fifty-one thousand by the time you take all the costs, including Ellers fee, your bond returning, paying Woody's rating agency and a few other smaller kinds of things, total is about fifty-one thousand.
Did they, did they kind of that premium? Did they kind of the premium or?
No, no, they, that, that's partly offered and you can see when you go through all this, that, that's part of how they did on that project. We take advantage of it. Future value savings, the actual reduction in debt service payments of nine hundred and twenty-one thousand over six years. Not all that money saved, obviously this year, some of it doesn't get saved till twenty twenty-two. So your present value, that taken to account for the value then is about a dollar, twenty twenty-two isn't the same as a dollar now. It's still eight hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars. That's a seven point four percent savings, that's really good. Um, the state looks, uh, on an advanced refunding asset threshold, it says it has to be at least three. And we like to see something in that, in at least around that five percent range, so this is very good savings. They have nine hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars in savings, about a hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars a year. Will reduce your payments. What'll happen is you receive the money on the closing day, which is December ninth. At that time, you'll have until the end of January, almost two months to invest the dollars. And then come the end of January, then you pay off the old, the old bonds, both issues of two thousand and six and two thousand and seven. If you go to page twelve, bid calculation, there you can see, that's where even, even with the original price of ten million six, it'll only be a lot more, and all the bonds and bids will have, will have a higher, um, and again, that's because you're paying, you're paying, you can see, uh, your coupon rates are five percent, but the rates to the investor are, are much, much more because, because of that premium. And they're, they're gonna make those investors take that premium when they buy the bonds. The true interest rate on the far right-hand column takes into account that big premium as well as the interest rates. And that's how we evaluate the bid, the two investors, came from Jeffries out of New York. And they had four other partners along in their bid, uh, Morgan Stanley, Brandon James, FTN, and Ameris. We also got a different Hudson Truckee out of Chicago, one out of Milwaukee from Bear, and one out of Dallas, Texas, where it was off security. All in all, pretty good interest in your bonds. We look at the next page, that shows where the money's coming from and where the money's going, sources and uses. You have about nine million six of the bonds that need to be paid off. And you got the big reoffering premium, so you're able to then reduce the size of the bond issue. Keep that down to nine, two dozen, you had that one million two hundred and fifty-five. There's a little underwriting discount, this kind of points on mortgage trigger, making some of your profits. Issuance costs, uh, deposit to the refunding fund, that's the money that's actually needed to pay off the existing bonds. And since you sell bonds at five thousand dollars, it's a little bit of a problem. Can't, you can't do it to the exact penny of the investment you have to do to find. The next, um, the next page shows the actual new payment schedule. Principal is nine million six oh five, and interest rates of five percent, uh, and the P and I. The next two pages show the refunded debt service, the two existing bonds from two thousand six and two thousand seven. See the rates there were four percent in the one and four, the four point one two five on the other. But the, so the reason you're saving the money isn't on the interest rate, it's on, it's in the fact that they paid that big premium to offset the fact that they wanted to have the higher initiative from the investors. Political ask came in, uh, the numbers on it, shows on the far right-hand column, compares your existing debt to the new debt. And there's that hundred fifty-some thousand dollars a year, average about a hundred fifty-two thousand. Grand total of nine hundred twenty-one thousand dollars of savings. Again, the present value showing on there and that percentage is also showing on that page. And the last thing we concluded is a copy of the rating report we got from back in the movies, which was very complimentary.
There it is.
To the district. One of them talked a lot about the community, the employers, the taxpayers, talked about housing market, talked about your enrollment. Talked about future flexibility in your funding and one of the things they looked at was the fact that you've been kinda ramping up in terms of, a couple of years ago, we'd say a lot of some additional dollars. Will approval, the three hundred dollars on the operating revenue and the four twenty-four on the L O R, local option revenue. And the fact that you could last year done the three hundred, this year you, on your proposed, you took the three hundred twenty-five out of the four twenty-four. And so, that still leaves you with another, some flexibility in future if you needed to add, they added ninety-nine dollars on comp. They looked at that, so they looked at a lot of things and, uh, in the end, came up with a nice report for you, uh, and a nice high rating. So, that's kind of the results. Certainly any questions? And then obviously there's a, a long motion or long, uh, resolution for you to adopt. I would like to see if you get, if you're all fired up and you get it back from your board meeting after all the things you threw about tonight, just start reading that.
Well, I'm always glad to have my fellow board members here when we're talking about bond issuances. So, my favorite would be Brandon, yes, go ahead, Brandon.
Uh, just a question under your cost of issuance on your sources and uses. Um, fifty-one thousand fifty-six dollars?
Yep.
What portion adds as LRS and what portion is?
Is this retired in five years? Retired? Yeah, I mean, do we pay off the total nut in five years? This is like a twenty-year situation.
Um, let's ask him that question. This goes out.
So, we're about ten million. Yeah, that's like seventy.
I would guess ours is somewhere in here with the, about half of that somewhere in twenty-five. Somewhere in that, I can get you, I'll get these exact numbers. And then somewhere in that ballpark.
Mr. Lindholm, you, you put this out as a bid for an hours come, or I'm sorry. You contract with LRS, they put it out for a bit, but as far as the professional service that we're using, um, how do you, how did you have at LRS for your?
It's who we've used in the past, so we continue with that.
Okay. Okay, that's, that's my.
Point taken.
Yep.
Anything else, Brandon?
Uh, no, I, I guess I, last, over the last time that you were here, um, a couple of times I, I'll just point out, we did save about one point five million dollars in interest by not issuing all bonds upfront.
Absolutely, that, you know, we went through a process there and we looked at, but, you know, the potential for the loss if the rates had gone up versus the savings and the interest. And over that three-year period, we were, the market was kind.
Yep.
And we, by, by deferring that interest over those, over those three bond issues, the district did save significant amount of money. And again, here, we're being good stewards of, of the district's money. Again, this doesn't give you any new money to spend, all this does is reduce your payments to debt service. It's like, like you going on your financing or mortgage, it's the exact same thing.
Yep.
And you're just being good stewards of the district's money and helping taxpayers out.
So, just for the general public and for me, um, these, these are due in sixteen, two thousand sixteen. Are they retired in twenty-two?
If you would not refinance them, you would have had an annual payment each for the next six, uh, uh, from, in twenty seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two.
Of about one nine or whatever?
And so, now what you're doing is just like you would have a refinancing mortgage, you're, you're taking, you're selling out new bonds.
Mm-hmm.
These new bonds. You're taking the money from the new bonds, paying off the old bonds.
Mm-hmm.
Then you'll have payments on the new bonds, but those payments will be about a hundred fifty-two thousand dollars a year less than what you're paying on the old ones.
And according to this information, it would cause a decrease in property tax levies payable two thousand sixteen through twenty-one as it refers to these bonds.
What'll happen is your, your truth and taxation notice that went out, that has the old payments getting on it. So, you'll get a new, you'll get a new, uh, run from the Department of Ed in the next couple of weeks for your December meeting and certify your levy. And we will send this information on with the Department of Ed and they will adjust your levy downward based on the sponsor.
And that's a good thing.
Yes, ma'am.
Anyone else? Kurt?
Chair, thank you, nicely done. These bonds were for the, uh, W process. These bonds, this is the second time that these have been refinanced, correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, Mr. Spogin did, buddy, a few years ago.
Yeah, the, the original bonds were sold earlier, these were the refunding bonds that were done in two thousand six and two thousand seven.
Yeah, and I guess what I'd like to say is, uh, feel it's all about, that's more numbers administration, so you've done the governor more of the kinda rating and the kind of interest that we got from the market. And, you know, our capacity, cause really that's what this represents.
Yes, absolutely.
And so, well done and, uh, our district, our taxpayers, our contingency deserve this.
And down the road, all of those other three issues that were going on, these nice issues, down the road, at some point, those will vary as well.
Sure.
At this point, it's not even a lot.
And then we just function the market being, you know, the rate being where they are, we should get it back, so thank you.
Anything else? At this time then, instead of the forty-two-page, um, resolution, we have it, uh, winnowed down in our agenda and, uh, I'm looking for a member to read the following resolution. Kurt, do you wanna handle that? This would be action item six A, resolution awarding sale of bonds.
Resolution awarding the sale determining the formal details authorizing the execution, delivery and registration and providing for the payment of general obligation, school building refunding bond. Series two thousand fifteen page, the full resolution is attached.
Okay, I'm looking for a motion for adopting of the foregoing, or, okay, go ahead.
That, that was the motion, we, we need a second. There we go.
Thank you, Brandon, for saving me from myself. It looks like it's a roll call vote.
Mm-hmm.
And we're gonna start with Brandon Anderson.
Aye.
Derek Johnson.
Aye.
Uh, Susan. Uh, Kurt?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well, Kim and Valerie are absent, it's a five-zero vote and the motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much, Kerry.
I just have a couple, uh, there's a whole bunch of documents that I'll leave behind and sign, but there's a couple of documents that if I could just give the chair and clerk signatures on. Do you have a minute?
We have a minute.
All right, I appreciate that, so I'll take those back with me. Here's the other, I hope you go back.
Yep.
Um, there's an envelope there and I can all go back in that.
Those are the ones you need signed right now?
Yes.
Okay.
So, Chair and Clerk, those two.
Yeah. And you just signed right above where it says Chair.
That'll be worth a little press time in the paper, right? You know, just saved nine hundred thousand dollars.
So, I sign here and here?
Yeah, right above that, right there in there.
Thank you.
Mr. Detterman? That oughta get some screen time, right? You know, saved nine hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars.
I have done that?
All right, and then if you just sign your name three times along there, you can use a black pen.
Oh, sorry about that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you everyone very much.
Here's your pen back, sir.
Oh, thank you. What an honest guy, look at that.
Yeah, just clean as a whistle. Oh.
And again, I really like, really, really impressed with all, all the work that you guys have done with that last bond issue.
Well, and we're grateful to the, the, the public, obviously, and we made good use of the funds and we are reaping the benefits from the whole situation, so. And thank you for your part in it.
Thank you.
That leads us to, that leads us to six B, ratification of two thousand fifteen through two thousand seventeen, Education Minnesota, Pequot Lakes, E M P L. I'm gonna hang on just a second. Oh, you're fine. I just didn't wanna continue without getting the whole thing in here. So, uh, six B would be ratification of two thousand fifteen through two thousand seventeen, Education Minnesota, Pequot Lakes, E M P L, Teachers' Master Agreement. I'm looking for a motion to ratify the two thousand fifteen through seventeen, Education Minnesota, Master Agreement. Bran, Derek? Second by Susan. Any discussion? Well, I'll just have a comment, I mean, the whole process was, um, it went very, it went very well. I know that's a general term, there was a lot of transparency on both sides, there was a lot of effort towards a conclusion by both sides. I appreciate both of those things. I think it's very telling when, um, the superintendent stands up on the whiteboard and proves his budget for what it is. And I think it's also, pardon me, very telling that the union representatives, uh, came into these meetings without their, uh, union steward. And there was a, a real flavor of trust in the room. Uh, we started in April, if I'm not mistaken, and here it is, the school year is barely, uh, done and we are finished. So, I appreciate the teachers' union side of that thing and, um, I appreciate Mr. Lindholm and our side of the bargaining process. Go ahead.
I'll go along with that, this is my first time on the negotiating committee and I was just very impressed with how cordial and cooperative every, it, it just seemed to go smooth. So, I really appreciate that.
Absolutely. Negotiations are sometimes never easy, but they were a lot, uh, easier. I mean, I just, I really appreciate the mood that was in that room and, and I, the same can be said with two eighty fours, we're going through that negotiation process right now. All right, well, with that, I am looking for, uh, any other discussion?
No, Mr. Chair.
Uh, Kurt, sorry.
Uh, no, I guess from the balance of our board, thank you for what you guys did, Valerie as part as well.
Absolutely.
Yep.
Yeah, anytime you're good, I trust and anytime you can carry that forward, the future activity here, so, thank you.
So, now, uh, that was discussion, I am looking for a vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, the ayes have it. Uh, six C is a proposed Spanish class trip and I believe, are we gonna do the motion first?
It's up to you.
We should.
Okay, then, yeah, before discussion starts. So, uh, looking for a motion to support moving forward with planning and implementing a, uh, Spanish class trip to Costa Rica in June two thousand seventeen. Looking for a motion.
So, move.
In a second.
Second.
Kurt? And with that, we will start our discussion by having Chris Palmer, Spanish instructor, give us the lowdown, the four-one-one.
Well, we just took a trip, um, this past June and I think the day after we returned, people were asking, when is our next trip? Assuming that we go every year. And, um, I feel like our students learn a lot, especially in the airport. Because students haven't gone through customs before, you know how they say, put your liquid items into the bag? They thought that pertains to everybody but me. So, we had a number of them having things, um, you know, confiscated. But, um, they also learned a lot about language and culture. We had students that had never seen people in poverty before, they'd never been to the ocean, we saw lots, lots of, um, wildlife. They got to use their language, uh, when they purchased things at the hotel, interacting, uh, with students at the school. Um, so, we are excited to take another trip. Um, we are looking at trying to take a trip every other year and that has to do with when the band is taking a trip in September. So, every two years, every two years. Um, you can see, uh, maybe it's on the very last page, it's the price of the trip. Um, it's a little bit more expensive than, um, when we went this year and maybe it's because costs have gone up, but we are doing some additional things. Um, Crocodile Safari, even though we did that last year, we paid for that as an extra excursion when we got there. So, that's new. Um, there is a, um, hanging bridge excursion, waterfall visit, um, and then the whitewater rafting. So, those are, were all additions to the trip. We looked at a few different programs and felt that we were really happy with Explorica. Um, you know, we're willing to go with, with EF if we need to too because they're an excellent program. And then we looked at a food on passports, but they were about four hundred dollars more and we just did not put that on our students. Even though they said their hotels were nicer and meals were better. It's a good experience for our kids, have lots of rice and beans too. There were plenty of choices when we ate.
Sure.
Most were buffet, so.
Any questions from the board?
How, how do the students, uh, raise the money to help fund this?
You know, we had a few fundraisers and I would say that, um, you know, there were a number that, I, that worked, they paid for it on their own by working. Uh, so, there were a few whose parents paid the money upfront. Um, we, fundraisers we had last, last year or the last, we had, um, there was a pizza fundraiser and then we volunteered for PAC. And so, PAC donated over the two years, a thousand dollars and then, um.
For student.
Uh, total. And then what we did is I looked at how many hours did they work and then they got so much for hours they worked. And so, it was those cases that were, those that sold the pizzas that night from the pizza sale. And then we also sold broads at super value. So, if they put the tie in, um, they probably raised about somewhere between two hundred and three hundred dollars. And I gave the parents upfront, you know, if there's somebody that wants to help with fundraising, great, but I'm going to do limited because I volunteer on three boards. And, you know, a lot outside of like, the school day too. And so, um, but nobody wanted to step forward and then I even found that even when we sold pizzas, there were a number of parents that just bought twenty pizzas themselves. You know, which then they might as well just pay, have paid the money upfront. So, we definitely will do a few fundraisers again, but I said, plan that it's going to be your spending money, so.
And how much, how many kids went the last time?
There were eighteen that went last time. Uh, it was probably a little bit of poor planning on my part because I said, oh, let's leave right when school's out. But those kids that were in spring sports or didn't participate. And there were, I would say at least, um, that wanted to go on the trip, um, but just thought, you know, I might make it in state for baseball or, or track or whatever, so they didn't, they didn't sign up. Right, so that's why they went a little bit later.
So, there's twenty-eight and then you ended up with eighteen, you, you lost.
Well, I think there were about ten more that would've gone, you know, tiny bit different, yeah.
All thirty kids.
Right.
Oh.
I think we'll have thirty.
Is that the?
Is that the optimum amount?
I think we'd be going, but.
Oh, you're good.
Same question. The optimum number is there, roughly? I may not have to say that we can, we want two.
Well, I don't think we should have more than thirty, just because thirty is a big enough group to handle and with thirty, we would have five chaperones too. So I think thirty will be plenty. And I remember, um, Senor Engel had taken thirty-two and he said, it was a few too many.
Okay, how many?
So he didn't think it would take thirty of him.
Softworks senior?
Softworks or senior?
Yeah, to get it.
And we didn't have any seniors that went. You know, the seniors were at the point where they thought, I'm going to college or I'm going to lead this or that program and so they didn't want to spend the money. So I'm guessing again, it'll be primarily softworks engineers. Although there might be seniors and, and the kids that went before, uh, we probably won't let them sign up until a certain date. You know, because it could be that some will go as seniors because they loved it so much. I mean, they were, they were, I'd say, out of half the groups, that was the best thing I've ever done in my life. I don't want to leave. I'm coming back here again, so. And they may not, but they may say, oh, I'm doing it. I'm gonna raise the money, go.
So you've done it before. There were no issues. It was a great learning experience, language immersion. Everybody came home safe and better off for it?
Yes, yeah.
Are we ready to vote or? No, I'm just, I'm kidding, obviously. Well, I thank you for taking this on. Or is it gonna be the same chaperones as last time?
Well, before it was Mr. Wagner and myself.
Oh, yeah.
And so, um, we are thinking we're gonna have more students. And so he would like to bring his future wife with on the trip. Um, she's a teacher for Brighter.
At Washington, yeah.
And so then, uh, they'll be married at the time. And then, um, I would like to bring my daughter who will have a nursing degree.
Yeah.
Because I think she will be an asset. We did have three girls with stomach issues, one parasite issue, and then we had a girl that had an allergic reaction with, um, she used horses. And so luckily we have the med kids, you know, and so I just think that would be another plus. Um, then the first one who said that they wanted to come on the trip is Mr. Wagner. So he would be the other chaperone, but if he couldn't go, then we ask Mr. Lindholm. Give Mr. Lindholm a medical, because it could be that he won't be able to go.
Okay.
And if your daughter gets sick, you'll need another medical professional.
Yeah, right. Susan's putting her name in now.
But I thought if he could go, that's another.
Well, you are being serious about the administrator wanting to go? Okay, yeah, no. All right.
Have a deep point of view?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, good for you.
She'll have a nursing degree.
Great. Won't that be a relief? I'm sorry, no, we don't want to get off here. So anyway, um, any other questions from us? Yep. So here's the deal, um, and thank you very much, Ms. Palmer. We will now take a vote on the, uh, Spanish class trip to Costa Rica. And all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it?
Well, thank you.
Augusto es mio. Yeah, see? I've been waiting all night for that.
You were just, had that primed, ready to go.
Just jumping on that. No, I hope you have a great time and if there's anything else we can help you out with, uh, let us know.
Okay.
Yeah, amen. So could I. I mean, I'm sorry. Okay, here we go. Uh, six D, are we gonna have a presentation with this?
Yep.
Uh, Mr. First will be giving us a presentation, but before they do, we do that, I'm looking for a motion to approve implementation of the Pequot Lakes Educational Access to Technology Program.
So moved?
Brandon, a second? Derek, thank you very much. And with that, I'll turn this over probably to Superintendent Lindholm for a minute.
Yeah, um, the, the, for the public and for our staff, our, our school board had a work session on this topic a while back. Um, and so a lot of this is review for some of our board members, but it may be the first time some, some of you have heard about, um, some of the work that Kevin's been doing in the background and myself and our administrative team, uh, really trying to answer the question. How can we get access to students, to access to technology for students? Um, being that we've, we've done so much back out, background work, providing, um, the, the, the network, um, developing digital curriculum, um, moving some of those things forward. We're now at this, I, I, we call it kind of the adolescent stage of technology integration in classrooms where we have carts. But if Nikki wants, Nikki Stark, I'm looking at her, if she wants to assign homework and with her math curriculum, the kids don't have anything that they take with them to, to go home. And so there's a barrier there from a pedagogical standpoint for our classroom teachers. Um, it would've been, in my opinion, preemptive or preliminary or too early to jump to some kind of a one-to-one initiative three years ago. We just weren't ready. We didn't have the backbone in place. Um, but, uh, I feel like, yeah, our administrative team has wrestled with this. We're now at the point where we need to decide which way we're gonna go to get kids that kind of access. And so Kevin and I and, and some others have worked for probably a whole year studying how to answer that question. Um, and it's involved, uh, a feedback loop through our advisory council, um, and some others. So with that, I'm just gonna hand it over to Kevin to kind of walk us through where we've arrived in our decision-making process here and, um, we're looking for board approval to move forward. So we have the green light, so.
Okay. Um, so wait, first of all, Mr. Chair, for, for my computer to restart, Eric, just to check that process, if it's available. But, uh, uh, included in your, uh, your board packet is a, is a copy of the presentation. We got a chance to look at that. Um, and really what we did is based on the feedback that we got from that work session, we went back and, and looked at, um, two things. First of all, vendor selection of really who's gonna be doing this for us. And then secondly, uh, some of those what-if questions opposing that, we, we dug deeply into those and, and, um, and tried to, uh, try to really plan for all of the what-ifs and the different situations that, that could come up.
I don't get it.
Speaking of technology, right?
Again, this is review for the board. We're, uh, basically, um, and what Mr. Lindholm said was, we've taken a lot of time to decide what we want to do with one-to-one technology rather than just jump in. We, uh, as this district has been known for many years, have been very deliberate in this decision. And I do appreciate the amount of work that has gone into the background of this to get us to this moment tonight, so. Is it up yet or do I need to keep going with that?
We have about ten seconds.
Who are you starting? Did you draft this outline yourself? Did you do this by yourself or do you have?
In terms of contents or graphics or?
I'll make it count.
Uh, Mr. Lindholm and I worked on the contents just together.
Kevin has a career in technology. It's just waiting for him.
Um, so, uh, one of the things that we're looking at here is really it's, um, you know, kind of the rationale provides that historical perspective. But the, the eligibility question was one of those what-if scenarios. So basically, we're talking about what grades are we talking about are going to be, um, available or that have access to this, this program? And, um, what we're looking at first of all is, uh, you know, the one, one of the fixed components that we're well aware of is really our, our capital budget and how much we can put towards this program. So to keep those, those costs in a range that, um, uh, doesn't cause us to ramp up spending for, um, in terms of technology capital. We went with a three-grade model and, um, specifically based on a three-year cycle. In the three-year cycle, um, to remind the board, we originally talked about a couple of options that we were exploring that were based on, uh, variations of this program. We've done it in other districts in Minnesota. Some districts are choosing to do an other, every other year option. Some districts are choosing to do a every three-year option. For responding to the feedback that we've gotten both from the board and also from,
Parents.
Parents and the feedback we've said we're doing, we decided to go with a three-year cycle, um, and really for a couple of reasons. First of all, uh, the three-year rotation shrinks the number of, of kids. And what that does is allows the district to contribute more dollars to each device. If we did an every other year rotation, I mean, we would have more kids eligible for a device, thus the district would not be able to contribute as much per device. Um, we think that that's really a bonus, um, for, and, and we're speaking to that issue with families that have multiple children. And also with less grades eligible, um, families with multiple children may not be in one of those hotspot years. Versus every other year, you have a very good chance of having, if you have multiple children, of having multiple kids in those grades. Um, one of the downsides about this is it takes us a little, a little extra time to achieve saturation. So with every other year program, within a couple of years, we can basically at the secondary level have access to devices throughout, um, or at least have that opportunity there. Uh, with the three-year cycle, it takes us a little bit more time. We have an extra year in there. Um, and when we're talking about contribution amount, remember that we were originally talking about Chromebooks as our, as our device of choice. So the increase in dollar amount that we're able to contribute as a result of going with the three-year cycle puts us over really to half the cost mark for Chromebooks. And we'll get into price specifics here in a little bit. Um, and eligibility wise, this year, uh, you know, we have money set aside for this program. And we're talking, um, about a early spring rollout for this. But going forward, this is really a beginning of the year thing, okay? So we're talking about a, a device window that's in August and kind of rolling up into the beginning of October. So, um, this year's a little bit different because it's really taking more time to make sure that we've got all our desks in a row.
Yes, Mr. Chair, can we go back to the end again, or can I, real quick?
Go ahead, Kirk.
Mr. Chair, thank you. So Kevin, we can, we can slide a little bit into the school year before these kids have their device to function within the classroom or would you have a hard date that you gotta come to school with your permit?
Uh, no, there is some flexibility there and it's for a couple of reasons.
Go ahead.
Um, first of all, during, uh, while we could do something in the summer, during that first few weeks of school, we've got a lot of transition in terms of kids, enrolling kids into, into the district. Um, and thus we want to make sure that they have the same opportunity and a window in which to purchase a device. Secondly, I want to stress that, um, we're not reducing devices that the district currently owns. And, um, having carts of devices available for kids who choose not to purchase or cannot purchase or what have you, those are always going to be available. So we, we're kind of in the situation where we're at right now where, um, we're gonna have devices available even during that period of time. Finally, the last point is, is that with the vendor that we selected, which is kind of what I'm moving into next, um, devices shipped immediately. So while the window is a six-week window for ordering, if you choose to order at the beginning, which most of our static families that choose to order probably will, um, they'll have that device before school starts.
Got it. And you don't think we'd terribly disrupt it to get those kids who don't have those devices or struggling to gain, like, you mean?
No, not for the benefits gained of, of making sure it's a little bit fair for those who are starting to be able to.
Because it's immediately done, it'll be the benefit of getting kids bitten on.
I get that.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. All right, um, so one of the biggest things that we accomplished since we spoke last about this was selecting a vendor for this. Um, for vendor selection process, we went up to three of our main, uh, vendor options. So Tierney Brothers and St. Paul, you may or may not have heard of them. Their big, um, business with us was they were responsible for our smart boards in the district when we, uh, had that initiative during the campaign. And both in purchasing and then also some of the initial installation. Um, they work exclusively with school districts, uh, and do audiovisual hardware and, and really have installed probably most of the smart boards in the state of Minnesota for schools. Uh, also Best Buy. Best Buy has an education division, um, and Best Buy came up on the list because they're the ones that have been doing this, uh, program. Right now, with seven districts currently. Dino was the first and then there's several other districts throughout the state. Uh, and it ranges from the, uh, small, smaller than us districts in southern Minnesota to, um, some suburban and exurban districts around the metro. And then C W G, um, they're a huge hardware provider and they're our vendor currently for most hardware purchases. Um, out of these three, two decided to put forth approvals. Um, C W G opted in the end to not put forth approval. Uh, we put together a selection committee, um, and had, uh, Tierney Brothers and Best Buy come in and give us, you know, kind of their best deal. And the levers are really what we were looking at, um, in terms of our workforce and what they could provide. And Best Buy was our selection, um, based on really a few things. First of all, Best Buy having a store in the area, we're talking, a little bit later, we'll talk about service and support. Having a local option is a really big deal in terms of making that process easy for families. And then, um, two, uh, having a very easy and intuitive process for purchasing is basically what we're doing is like going into a section of bestbuy.com. So it's the same thing as buying on bestbuy.com or on amazon.com or that sort of thing. Tierney had a kind of create something that would be quite as intuitive. And really finally, eh, experience and having, uh, done this with seven other districts and they're signing on additional five this year, um, not including us. Um, this program for them in the state of Minnesota is catching on very, very quickly. Um, so they kind of are, we have proven that they're able to do this effectively, um, and they haven't lost any of the districts that they've been working with since the beginning. All right, so devices, um, this, this lineup of devices has not changed from our original discussion. So we've got, um, the Acer Chromebook, the Asus Chromebook, we have an eleven-inch, thirteen-inch, and then we have the thirteen-inch MacBook Air. Um, again, in selecting these devices, it was kind of the best bang for the buck, something that would last. And then these are three devices that we currently use in the district in our carts. So A, there's not a lot of distinction between student devices that are district-owned and student devices that are family-owned, for being conscious of stigma. And then also in terms of, we're not bringing in something that's new to teachers that they haven't used before. So, um, we want to make that as simple as possible in terms of a manage, a maniability sampling. Um, one point of fact here is that the thirteen-inch, the MacBook, we're really saying that's for, for our high school kids at the end. And it's really as a preparation if parents want to prepare for the child's next leap onto college. And, and or as they're taking some of the more intensive electives that we offer, video production, something that would, uh, you would need a little bit more than a Chromebook, we want to make that available. All right, so, uh, pricing. So in, in that proposal, um, it gives you the suggested retail pricing, um, and then the actual purchase price. So the district is contributing a hundred and fifty dollars towards the purchase of a device, um, for families that opt to choose to, to purchase one, um, through this program. Um, that means that for the, the Asus and Acer Chromebooks, the, the price that parents would pay would be a hundred and thirty dollars. Um, and then for the MacBook Air, um, the parents would pay six ninety-nine ninety-nine. As a clar, point of clarification, they also have the opportunity to purchase an extended warranty, which includes accidental, accidental damage. So if it, if it breaks, if you accidentally drop it, if you shut something and cracks the screen, all of that is covered. The district does not contribute to those things, optional, totally. Also accessories like a wireless mouse or a protective case, um, those, those are optional as well. We're not contributing. We're only contributing to the cost of the device. This is a hundred and fifty dollars this year and this, this number is a fixed number. But this number is based on a simple formula based on our funding and our, what we can, what we can afford. Thus in future years, we'll always be reassessing in terms of that amount. And it could go up slightly, it could go down slightly depending on the funding that's available.
How, how long is, is there, is there fixing the cost? Do we get more than just one year or?
Uh, and, and this is, this is something that we'll be, we'll be reassessing, um, at, on a yearly basis because as, as the technology changes, we'll be changing devices and so forth. Um, and something that we'll be looking at in terms of looking at the. And something that we'll be looking at in terms of, looking at the timing, as we get to the timeline portion of the rollout this year, it's trying to hit a sweet spot in terms of manufacturers dumping old models and having access to sufficient inventory for a process like this without hitting the new models that are brand-new and super-expensive. So we're walking a little bit of a fine line with that this year.
Yeah, well, we're kind of engaging at three-year minimum price for maybe.
Right, right.
Once we start, we're in for three at least.
We are, in the sense of the program and the contract with Best Buy is based on that approach. The devices within there are, we receive an education discount anyways, so we're not locking in a specific price, or we're not locking in a bulk price based on this. The preferential pricing is more based on large-volume school district pricing, so we don't need to worry as much about price fluctuation where we would need to lock into a contract where the prices are fixed.
Okay, or a warranty method, see, I mean, at least.
So clarity, clarity, it's not a locked price with the vendor?
I got that, I made it.
Yeah, okay.
But I'm trying to keep ceiling on this thing too soon, I don't know, for whatever reason, but I know that it's against parents.
Yeah, right.
Parents are to see this stuff.
Depreciate.
Be polite.
Yep. No, you're good. It's a good point.
It's a good point.
Another one of the major points that was raised in terms of feedback from our original discussion was the question of equity and ensuring equity for all of our families. We talked about some of the programs that we can learn about in other districts, but we need to go back and look at specifics and how that would work in our district. So in using those as a basis for a free and reduced lunch lease option for families here, we kind of developed the specifics or the protocols here. So a family that qualifies for free and reduced lunch and has their eligibility approved, and that's one component, having their paperwork in into the district, the district will purchase the device and own the device for the period of time. So it's the same period, three years. And the family contributes a one-time fee of $50 for use, and district owns throughout. And then they're required to return the item to the district. That, the device will be, have remote lock and GPS monitoring put on it in terms of device location. And then the lease agreement includes stipulation of replacement costs if there's any, if it's lost, if it's still broken, that sort of thing, that the family will be responsible for that. This is optional as the straight-up purchases. So if the family says, no, we'll just use the school one, that's fine, so it's just another option. We have a budget adjustment for this. At the end of the three years, the family can then choose either to purchase a device outright from the district and take ownership of it for a cost of $20, or return it to the district. And then we're basically weighing the depreciation factor, but we're saying that this device still has value because we can bring it back in internally and repurpose it somewhere else for probably another year. And every district that Best Buy currently works with a program like this has some variation of this type of program providing an equitable option for families that qualify for free and reduced lunch. All right, the next slide is basically just your purchase process, and I wanted to show how straightforward it is. So what we do is we pull a record from Skybird for students that are eligible for this. We, I will put a link to the Best Buy-generated web store. It's more or less a bridge in that it's the Best Buy web store, but it's our branding, so it'll look very similar to our website. The experience is basically select your device, add it to the cart, purchase, type in your code. So very similar to any online purchase. And then they have that optional warranty and accessories. The code reduces the final cost by $150, they complete payment, it ships then, the very next business day, and the device arrives at the family's home. One clarification point in there, we did have a family wondering if he could collect the Best Buy points or whatever off of his purchase if he can, in fact, so if your family uses those, they can.
I didn't know that.
Number six is district-only, which is the Best Buy then charges back that $150 to the district. This is another part underscoring having a purchasing window of limited time, because it makes the accounting very clear. At the end of that six-week window, we know what the bill is, rather than having the window open all year, where we have to kind of keep dodging to see what our final numbers could be at from a budgetary standpoint. Okay, now the all-important question, what happens when it breaks? So basic flow here, did you purchase the extended warranty or not? And right now, you know, we would be recommending, of course, for them to take the warranty on, but with the low price of the Chromebooks, in terms of just the straight retail price of under 300 bucks, and then the cost of extended warranties for things, Best Buy is seeing a 30% or undertake of extended warranties in these other programs. So there's not a very high take. If they do purchase that, no matter what it is, oops, I dropped it and it's broken, they can take that device to Best Buy in front of you and walk out with the Chromebook. So.
What's the cost of the warranty here?
The warranty for three, it ranges on the device, because the MacBook's considerably more expensive, but if you do the Chromebook, because that's by and large, three years is $189.
$189, and how do you pay that upfront?
That's in the cart, so you select your device, and then you want the warranty, it adds $189 to your charge.
We're not subsidizing that.
We are not, we're not. And that's, now the other, the added point is, is if you have any Mac device, Apple devices, in the past, if you needed to visit the Apple Store, it was quite a long drive, drive down the cities to get something fixed. Best Buy now has an exclusive contract with, they can offer Apple Care service within the Best Buy store, so you can get your Apple devices serviced in Baxter. This just started in October, and it's a pretty big deal not having to drive down to Rosedale, Southdale, and all America. So if you had a MacBook and you dropped it and broke it, or a screen or something went wrong, you could get it fixed in Baxter as well. Is, if not, you don't have the warranty, then basically it's a, is it a manufacturer's defect and is it within the one-year warranty? So like most consumer electronics. And then if yes, we've gotten self-maintainer status for both the Chromebook models, so we can get parts shipped to the school, and we can pop up screens and service them very quickly here with certain things. If it's something more in-depth, we can then ship it to the manufacturer and get a new one shipped back here that the kid can pick up. In the meantime, we have sufficient devices on hand to have as a loaner, so that the kid is not out of the device. The big one, though, is if it's not a manufacturer's defect and you didn't purchase the warranty, then that's it. There's no extended warranty coverage, and then it's the family's choice to replace the device at full cost, you know? Since we've already expended that budgeted amount for the coupon or the discount code, you have to wait until the next window opens. So then it's a decision to buy one at full cost or use one of the schools.
What's your recommendation? You said the participation on the warranty thirty percent. One of the three, I mean, I didn't have access by option twenty-five cents a month.
It's two-thirds of the price of the device, Kurt.
I understand, yeah.
My wife slaps me every time I go to buy one today, so, I mean, let's face it. All we can do is make it very aware at the point of impact. What I'd like to do is get through the presentation and then let's go with our questions, because we're almost there.
All right, so we're talking timeline here. So we're talking in December and then additionally probably in January, doing some informational meetings, face-to-face meetings with families. That will be including our Best Buy project manager, Dave Danarsky, who heads up the Division in Bloomington, and then also the corporate executive also likes to be at these things. So we'll have some Best Buy big weeks that'll come for those meetings as well. For year one, the coupon codes will go out in January to our eligible families. And then in February, our purchasing window for six weeks is going to open. And as a reminder, whenever you order, it ships the next business day, so we'll be getting, you know, that trip laying in right away. The beginning of March is, we'll have an additional family night for help with devices, so things like how do I add my printer at home, how do I connect to my Wi-Fi, that sort of thing. One of the biggest things, though, with the Chromebooks is like, how do I download software that doesn't exist? You don't have to do it because it's just there. And generally, people are getting a lot better about connecting to their home Wi-Fi and that sort of thing, but we're still going to offer it. At the end of March, in terms of paying bills, that's going to be where we're looking at the capital expenditure, this amount is budgeted for this year, so there's no request for funds in regards to that. And then taking time in April to really look at what went well and what did not, and making appropriate changes for the following year. It's another timeline piece in terms of why we're doing it, when we're doing it. And then from then on out, we're really formalizing year-two timelines, pulling those lists of kids who are eligible, and then getting ready for the fall rollout for the next year.
And Kevin, yes, you are very thorough, as usual. I mean, I really don't have a prob, we've discussed this for a couple hours, obviously we may have a few questions here. I mean, mainly what I want the public to know is, we're trying to provide one-to-one technology to the students, helping the families pick up the cost as much as we can. They will, in the end, own the device, and like every family, will be responsible for the device. Anything else I'm missing here?
Grades.
Go ahead.
Did you say the grades? Yes, the student surrendering in the grades, six, nine, and twelve on the normal cycle.
And like anything, we're rolling this out and with a lot of forethought, but there will be a little finger crossing, but I anticipate things are going to go pretty well, you know? So, so anyway, any other comments or questions or concerns?
I had one more.
Absolutely.
No, I'll just get, I'll contemplate what the answer might have been.
Okay. I think it has something to do with the warranty issue.
Yeah, it's my, all right, we'll, we'll.
No, no, really, Kurt. We do not want to stifle free speech around here.
I was going to contemplate one, and warranty play my role, but we're going to gloss right over that because I heard.
Well, as you can see by the flow chart, it could get dicey, Kurt, but as I understand it. In January or early December, informational meetings will be held to handle some of these concerns, questions, and comments with the parents.
I'd like to share one FYI, and that is, in your packets, after the slides, you'll see that we put together a letter.
Yep.
And for those who are here in the room, the intent is, pending board approval tonight, we'll turn around and get communication out to all secondary families yet this week or early next week. And what I'm really trying to do there is make sure parents of current sixth and ninth graders know that they have this opportunity coming before they go holiday shopping.
We're going to put this presentation on our website, too, so people can go.
We'll modify it a little bit, but we'll put the presentation, the forms, the letters, all of that stuff will be put together in typical Kevin style, very clean and professional.
Well, and that's much appreciated, because before holiday shopping begins, yes.
Yeah, that's why I want to get that done, exactly.
And I don't want to hop around to the main points here, but we have quite a few Chromebooks at our disposal purchased a couple of years ago, I might add. And so there is plenty of access to technology, we're just trying to ramp it up. Thank you very much, Mr. First.
So we need a motion and a...
We did the motion before.
We did that? Okay, good. Yeah, we need a vote.
Yeah, we're just, we're almost there, we're going to just. So no, we've already had the motion, we've had the discussion, and I'm looking for a vote to approve the implementation of Pequot Lakes Education Access to Technology Program. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. E, six E donations, do I ask for a motion first?
You can.
Yes.
I'm looking for a motion to accept the donations as presented and will be read.
So move.
Second?
Second.
Second. In an effort to acknowledge those that give above and beyond to this district, we have re-implemented the donations and the reading of the donations. So, item and amount, $100 by Mark and Wendy Sherman Designated Youth Tennis Program. $100 Patriot Athletic Club, Inc., for the tennis state tourney expenses. $148.08 by Pauline Gustafson for the athletics department. $300 in-play photography, Lori Westlin, youth sports programs. $6,816 Chicago Community Foundation Anonymous Fund PBIS programs. $1,346.17 Gregory Cook High School PBIS program. $4,280 Exposure Marketing and Promotion, Inc., Driven to Give Mills Automotive Group High School PBIS program. $2,000 Driven to Give Mills Automotive Group High School PBIS program. $500 Crosslake Ideal Lions for GLAPA. $20 Carol Thornburn GLAPA. $100 Steve and Mary Scarborough GLAPA. $100 Expression Shoe Center Beauty and the Beast Production. $50 Shorewood Ceramic Tile, Inc., Beauty and the Beast Production. $100 Lakes Dental Care PLC, Beauty and the Beast Production. $100 American Legion Club Pequot Lakes Beauty and the Beast Production Children's Tickets. $200 American Legion Club Nisswa Beauty and the Beast Production Children's Tickets. $50 Jenkins VFW Beauty and the Beast Production Children's Tickets. I'd like to thank everyone who donated to those, that was a month to those groups, thank you very much. Last but not least, seven.
Do we vote on that?
I'll vote, I'm in favor.
Oh, do we need a vote?
Just a vote, yep.
Okay, so, sorry. All in favor of accepting the donations is read?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, I guess I'm losing it. Seven, announcements and meeting dates, seven A, do you want to talk about this?
We don't need a motion necessarily, it just depends on our discussion. If anyone is interested in, from the board, this is, in to serve on the NJPA board, if you're interested, then we would nominate you and then, like Kurt did last year, see if you can get on there. Now Kurt, you know more than I do on this, you spoke with someone else.
Well, Barb Neproot, who is our counterpart, Crowe Aaron, who put in hers, and she was elected last year along with another seat to the...
She's throwing her name into the ring?
Yes, and she's up for reelection. And she has asked for my support, we moved that way extended to the board. I think Barb was a pretty capable person over there, has been on the board a long time, a pretty sharp person, I think did well in any context, so, but that does not mean that if any of you guys want to go for it, maybe we'll support Patriot.
Well, in lieu of this, maybe we're looking for a motion to nominate Barb Neproot to the, serve on the NJPA board.
The way that would work, Mr. Chair, is their board would, her name would be in the ring via their board, and then we have to vote, so we would vote for, that's the way it would look.
So currently, no nominations from this board, and we would just move on and skip this whole situation.
Val and Kim.
They have not voiced interest.
And I think the time to do so is closing.
Yeah, it is.
Yes. Anyone remotely interested, see Mr. Lintholm. That leads us to announcements and meeting dates. We're next up on Monday, December 7th, at 6:00 PM for a board work session, then a special board meeting?
Correct.
Is that how I understand that?
It'll be the audit, tentatively planning the audit there, yep.
And then we skip down to Monday, two weeks later, Monday, December 21st, for Truth and Taxation, and then a regular board meeting?
Yep.
Okay. And just as a brief aside, Kurt, I will not be at that meeting, so you will be...
I will be there.
Yes, thank you very much. And then on into January. What's that? Yeah, right. I'm looking for a motion to adjourn? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much, by the way.